Under Florida's Constitution and its statutes, the state and its agents are not permitted to claim copyright on its public records unless the legislature specifically permits it. This includes a work made or received pursuant to law or ordinance or in connection with a transaction of official business by any state, regional, county, district, municipal, or other unit of government and their associated committees and divisions created or established by the laws of the government of Florida. Text, communications, and images produced by the government of Florida and any county, region, district, authority, agency, or municipal officer, department, division, board, committee, bureau, commission, or other separate unit of government created or established by law are consequently in the public domain according to court interpretation in Microdecisions Incorporated versus Skinner.
I'd like to call to order the work session of Tuesday, February 19th, for our meeting Thursday on the 21st. Our first order of business are some presentations, but before we do that, Mr. Poe-Lace is out today and so is our city manager, but both of them will be with us on Thursday evening for the meeting. Our first employee to be recognized is Keith Law from the library, who's been working for the city of Clearwater for five years. Keith? Oh, sure, we're in the library and Keith isn't here.
We're in his office.
All right, well, Keith, welcome, or congratulations and thanks. Is there going to be a fine because he's a daylight? Okay, okay. A 15-year employee from our finance department, Clem Veriker. Clem is here.
And we're going to fine you a nickel for knocking down me.
Tripping all over.
Right trip. Congratulations. From our fire department, Peter Gachay has been with the city for 15 years.
Thank you for everything. Thanks for your service.
And from our Parks and Recreation Department, 15-year Sean Basely? Come on, he's not that old.
He's still recovering.
He just had a birthday or something?
No, but they all worked very hard over the weekend, so.
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, since we're talking about Parks and Rec, Mr. Hamilton, just a reminder, you know, a big hooray to our Parks and Rec Department and everybody who participated in the ESPN Elite Invitational. The events were sold out. To see the excitement that was generated by these softball collegiate players from all across the country was exciting, and the coverage on ESPN was just unreal. I mean, if you would saw the ads that were placed there, you know that the America's Best Beaches are right here in Clearwater in Pinellas County. So we appreciate the work of our Parks and Rec Department, Visit St. Pete, Clearwater, for making this happen, and we know it would not have happened if we hadn't, you know, we had gone to the county and asked them for some assistance and funding, and so we appreciate the Board of County Commissioners providing that additional money that helped improve the Eddie Seymour complex, and we want to thank those county commissioners enable us to become the softball capital of the world, and so thanks to everybody who made that happen. Mr. Hamilton, thank you for giving me that opportunity to throw that out. All right, come on, come on, it's a long weekend, I know. Our 20-year employee from Engineering and Traffic is Jay Gibson. Jay?
Jay Gibson began his career with the city on February 1st, 1999, as a traffic signs and markings technician. Jay came from the private sector and immediately showed his new peers and supervisors that he knew what it meant to work hard. On August 12th, 2002, he was made the lead worker for the sign shop to assist the traffic ops supervisor two. At that time, the supervisor two was over both the signal and sign shops, and the demand for assistance to oversee the sign shop was critical. Jay's performance as the lead worker utilized his private sector experience in organizing the sign shop, both in operational procedures and in the layout of the sign shop itself. Jay was promoted to the new position of supervisor two over the sign shop on January 21st, 2017, and has been superlative in his duties. He is one of the division managers' best advisors on operations, and he is very punctual and accurate in everything he does. He is a great innovator and works well with his personnel in solving unusual traffic operations issues. Congratulations, Jay, on your 20 great years with the city of Clearwater.
Thanks for everything. Thank you so much. Jay, did you do the sign for Dr. Patel? Very good. I was also reminded, and I have to throw this out too, because sometimes, you know, we get criticized because it's all Clearwater. Most of the teams that stayed here for that tournament that ESPN had did not stay in Clearwater. They stayed throughout the county, so the entire county benefited on something that we, you know, helped put together. So again, that's another reason for us to keep in mind that while people may come to events here in Clearwater, they don't necessarily stay at our hotels, they stay in hotels throughout the county, and the entire county benefits, and we need to keep reminding people of that because they think that we do this only for Clearwater. No, Clearwater does it for the county, and we can be very proud of those efforts that we do in that regard. I'm sorry, it was just a really exciting weekend to see all the, and even, you know, I even have to throw this out. For the first time, the Tampa Bay Times actually covered a sporting event in Clearwater. We had an international tournament here, and they didn't bother to cover it, but we brought in this tournament, and, you know, maybe they've got some, maybe they're trying to up their readership or something on the sports pages because they really did do a great job in promoting that event, and it's going to be back here for, at least for the next two years and hopefully longer. I think I'm going to stop talking about softball now. Okay, good, okay. Paul, no, we're at our 25-year employee Lupita Newell from our gas department.
Guadalupe Lupita Newell, 25 years of service, the gas queen of teamwork, began her service with the city of Clearwater in the gas department, February 7th, 1994, as a gas sales associate, the same position she still maintains. As gas sales associate, Lupita is responsible for replacement gas appliances to our existing commercial and residential customers covering three counties and over 20 municipalities. She has personally sold more than 4.3 million worth of appliances. Lupita's extensive follow-up and commitment to the customer has drawn her numerous accolades from her various repeat customers. As a senior and key member of the sales team, Lupita consistently exceeds her annual sales goals year after year. Lupita has demonstrated that she is a team player who goes the extra mile to provide outstanding customer service to not only external customers but internally as well. She effectively created a concise sales presentation that continues to provide prompt solutions to her customers' gas appliance needs. Her efforts during the economic downturn resulted in great success for the city of Clearwater and Clearwater Gas. For her efforts, the Florida Natural Gas Association recognized Lupita in September 2009 as the Marketing Person of the Year for the State of Florida. Lupita was also named Clearwater Gas System Employee of the Year in 2018. As one can see, Lupita's success has directly benefited the city of Clearwater as well as CGS, and we look to her for her continued success. Lupita is the consummate professional who is truly focused on the customer every step of the way. Her positive personality and work ethic should be instilled in us all. It is truly an honor to recognize Lupita Newell for her 25 years of dedicated and professional service to the city, our citizens, and the customers of the Clearwater Gas System. 25 years of service, Lupita Newell.
Now I gotta live off of that.
Thank you for everything, Lupita. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, thanks. Keep up the good work.
Congratulations, thank you so much.
Another 25-year employee for the city is from our engineering department, Pawel Dubinski.
Pawel Dubinski began his employment with the city's engineering department in February 1994 as drafting technician. Within a short time, Pawel was promoted to a position as an analyst of computer-aided design and subsequently to engineering systems coordinator. Pawel comes to us from Poland, where he earned an advanced degree in electronics engineering from Technical University in, what, oh.
Grodzwie.
Thank you. Practiced engineering in Poland before immigrating to the United States and obtaining his U.S. citizenship, of which he is extremely proud. Pawel's role in supporting the full scope of engineering's ongoing technology efforts require him to be proactive in his education, educational efforts, and keep up with the constant advancements in the technology world. He has done just that. Over time, Pawel has mastered advancements in technology, thereby playing a key role in the development and maintenance of the city's geographic information systems and Oracle Work Order Asset Management System. Oftentimes, the accomplishments and successes of an organization are driven by employees behind the scenes, employees that are not necessarily in public view but rather operate in such a way that does not attract attention. Pawel Dubinski is one of those persons. He works very quietly in advancing engineering's technology efforts and relevance, but the subtlety with which he works does not make his contribution any less important. Pawel Dubinski, 25 years of service.
That's his name, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you for everything. Thank you so much. Thanks for all your work.
You've got your hands full now, so.
Our January/February bimonthly team award is presented to the Heavy and Light Equipment Team, Pete Matisse, Randy Cohen, Mike Duff, and Philip Hughes.
Heavy and Light Equipment Team. January/February 2019 bimonthly team. Team members include Pietro, Pete, Matisse, Randy Cohen, Mike Duff, and Philip Hughes. As many of us know, Florida's Panhandle was devastated by Hurricane Michael. Officers from the Clearwater Police Department were immediately dispatched to assist. Equipment and personnel were quickly rounded up and made ready with the assistance of Philip Hughes, Pete Matisse, Randy Cohen, and Mike Duff. These men dropped everything they were working on, putting their heavy workload on hold to assure that our vehicles and equipment were ready for the long drive. They also made sure that the equipment was functioning at a high level of performance and sustainability for the three-week deployment. Without their assistance and expertise, the CPD Emergency Response Team would not have been able to respond in a timely manner to aid our fellow Floridians in their time of need. Thank you to this team for not only helping out our Clearwater Police Department, but by going above and beyond to be sure that what the department took up to the Panhandle was ready to go. Heavy and Light Equipment Team, January/February 2019 bimonthly team award. Thank you.
Great job. Great job. Thank you very much. Great job. Congratulations. Thank you. Great job. Thank you so much.
With that, we will recess our work session and call to order our pension trustees' meeting
for February 19th. Are there any addition or corrections to the minutes?
Move approval of the minutes as submitted?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. We're here.
Aye, good morning. Motion to approve the new hires for acceptance into the pension plan as listed in the agenda.
Any questions of staff on Agenda Item 4.1?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.1?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.1. Anybody from the public to speak to this motion? Comments, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Forgot to ask if there's anybody from the public wishing to speak on an item that is not on the agenda for the pension trustees? If not, we will move forward to Agenda Item 4.2.
Motion to approve the following request for employees to vest their pensions as provided in Section 2.419 of the Employees Pension Plan.
Questions for staff on 4.2?
Moved.
Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.2? Motion?
Move to approve Agenda Item 4.2?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.2. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 4.3.
Approve the following request of employees as listed in the agenda for regular pension as provided by Sections 2.416 and 2.424 of the Employees Pension Plan.
Questions for staff on 4.3? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.3? Motion?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.3?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.3. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Any other reports for us, ma'am?
Yes.
If not, we will adjourn the pension trustees and convene the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting for February 19th. Are there any addition or corrections to the minutes of January 14th?
Move approval of the minutes as submitted?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of January 14th. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Anybody from the public wishing to be heard on an item that is not on the agenda for the CRA? If not, we will move to Agenda Item 4.1.
Yes, good morning. So just as a reminder of how we got here in summer, in early fall of last year, the trustees decided to move in a shift in our food and drink strategy from finding that perfect destination restaurant to creating a restaurant destination by providing opportunities to fund multiple food and drink establishments that are open on nights and weekends, which means a gap in our current market. And the process that we followed was to have several online surveys and in-person focus groups and stakeholder interviews with downtown property owners, potential restaurant tenants, bar tenants, in order to craft a new program. And then what came out of that was two different programs. One that was tenant-focused, to capture tenants who may have been confused or lost under a previous process, and then one that was focused on property owners. So some big differences between old programs and the current one. We are focused on any type of food and drink that is open nights and weekends, Wednesday through Saturdays. We are focused on public improvements that stay with the building, so if a tenant happens to fail, that building is still ready for a new tenant. And then we also focused on some internal changes, more coordination between fire engineering and the building department, and to the extent that they have been wonderful to work with, and Ann Fogarty-France has been the lead liaison in working with those departments to make sure that they can get inspections in advance on potential problems they might face with hood issues or fire suppression, whatever it may be, trying to minimize surprises as much as possible. So for the first, for Items 4.1 and 4.2, these are grants that are going to bars. They are already open and established. The funding there, it's all reimbursement basis, so they've submitted their receipts, and they were eligible for improvements to the building for fixtures and for furnishings. So for 4.1, approve a grant agreement in the amount of $30,000 with Poor Yours Holdings, LLC, for interior building improvements at 522 Cleveland Street, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute the same.
Questions for staff on Agenda Item 4.1? What, what happens, the lease that the tenant has is for two years?
The current lease ends in February of 2020.
February of 2020?
Correct.
Okay, and what, so if they should go out of business before, then what happens again?
So the way that the bar portion of this program was established was that you could receive X amount of grant funding for every year that you're open, so up to $15,000 for every year that you are open. So Poor Yours has already been open for slightly more than a year, and then they would receive their first payment of $15,000 when this grant agreement is approved, and they would receive their second payment a year from the date the grant agreement has been approved. So they would have been open for two years, so they would have earned their $15,000 of grant money. We hope they're in business for a long, long time, but if they happen to go out in 2020 or move along, they have met the requirements of the grant program.
Any other questions, council? Motion? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.1? Motion?
Move to approve Agenda Item 4.1?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.1. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 4.2.
Yes, approve a grant agreement in the amount of $9,054.82 with Vector Amusements, LLC, for interior building improvements at 629 Cleveland Street, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute the same.
Questions on 4.2? Then just to be consistent, this one, this lease goes until February of 2021?
Correct. They had one that ended and they submitted their renewal for the additional time.
And everything else stays the same?
Correct.
Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.2?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.2?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.2. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 4.3.
Yes, so for 4.3 and 4.4, these are full-service restaurants, and they are currently under construction. They will receive their grant funds after they receive a certificate of occupancy. They're open for business. They're signing an agreement that says they will have that in hand by July of this year. Then they will submit their receipts, and they can request reimbursement. Their improvements are limited to just building improvements, right, that stay with the building. So exactly the same as the grant that you approved for ClearSky. It's a five-year loan-to-grant agreement. It's improvements that stay with the building, and it is on a reimbursement basis. So 4.3, approve a loan-to-grant agreement in the amount of $62,341.25 with 4C LLC doing business as Black Brick Tavern and Kitchen for interior building improvements at 432 Cleveland Street, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute the same.
Questions for staff on 4.3? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.3?
Move to approve Agenda Item 4.3?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.3. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 4.4.
Approve a loan-to-grant agreement in the amount of $100,000 with Tequila's Mexican Grill and Cantina, LLC, for interior building improvements at 422 Cleveland Street, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute the same. And Tequila's will be relocating from their current site to Cleveland Street.
Questions for staff on Agenda Item 4.4? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.4?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.4?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.4. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 4.5.
Yes, confirm the city manager's appointment of Micah Maxwell as the interim CRA executive director, and this will be through the end of May.
Questions for staff on Agenda Item 4.5? So it's March, April, May, for three months? I was under the impression, maybe incorrect, that Mr. Maxwell was supposed to concentrate entirely on Imagine Clearwater, and so now we're going to be giving him some additional responsibilities that will take away from the Imagine Clearwater?
Mayor, I'll try and make that answer for you. On behalf of Mr. Horn, it was his thought that those two responsible areas were very closely aligned, very closely related, Second Century Studios being one example, and that it was certainly within Mr. Maxwell's time and capability to be able to continue to supervise the CRA on a day-to-day basis in addition to the Imagine Clearwater primary focus, and...
I didn't have my meeting with Mr. Horn, you know, this past week, so I was a little, you know, didn't have an opportunity to discuss this with him, so I apologize for that. Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.5? Motion?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.5?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.5. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. No. Motion carried three to one with criticus in opposition. Agenda Item 4.6?
Right, so a little bit of background on this. Spark Zoo is the web design and hosting firm for the downtownclearwater.com website, and it was, I believe, two years ago that the city went through a process of refreshing its main website, and then also created the Downtown Clearwater One. But the reason we're here today is the site has a lot of capabilities that we're not using right now, so we're looking to increase the number of project hours, which tripped us over the $25,000 amount for director approval. So we're here in front of you because we need an additional $11,000 throughout this year to be able to add in a blog, add in more video, and things that, if you want more detail, Rosemary Demore can explain, but essentially make our website better, more robust.
Questions for staff on Agenda Item 4.6?
Yes.
Mr. Alberton?
Yeah, I'd like to know exactly what they're doing besides the blog and video for the $11,000, so if I could...
So the additional $11,000 will go towards an additional 100 hours...
Identify yourself.
Oh, sorry, Rosemary Demore, the Public Relations and Programs Manager for the CRA. The additional $11,000 will go towards an additional 100 work hours for a project director through Spark Zoo. I will go to increased security updates and increased SEO updates, search engine optimization, so more folks will be able to find the downtownclearwater.com website.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff on 4.6? Mr. Kandav?
Thank you. Is the website ADA accessible?
Yes.
Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.6? Motion?
Move to approve Agenda Item 4.6?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.6. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 4.7.
You know I can't leave without one more PowerPoint, or two. Okay. Great, so want to again give you the monthly update on where we're at in our 18-month strategy, which began in October of last year and will end in March of 2020. Remember, our desired outcome is to create lasting change in downtown by shifting the perceptions held by public and investors about city government and downtown Clearwater to one that aligns with the adopted vision. And there's four steps to that. You have already adopted a defined focus. We'll continue to communicate this strategy until everyone has it memorized and burned into their heart. We'll implement, and then we'll track and publish results. And we're really focused on four areas: creating and sharing authentic, positive stories about downtown Clearwater, beginning construction on Imagine Clearwater, permitting 600 housing units, and attracting $100 million of private investment. So as you know, you're all there, thank you for the opening of the Dreams of Dolly program at Second Century Studios. We had 50 media mentions of downtown in January, and then we also had over 600 visitors to the exhibit in January alone, which we were very, very pleased with. So that exhibit is open through June 30th. Please go to downtownclearwater.com for exhibit hours. And we're continuing along with having meetings with our dedicated development and permitting team and having a CRA resource in city departments. Again, as we mentioned, each CRA staff person has other people they're working with in other departments to ensure that all our projects are running smoothly and we're as helpful as possible in supporting our downtown stakeholders' ideas. We reviewed in the one-on-ones our 2019 editorial strategy, and this language that you see here comes straight from, right, your adopted plan, that we're moving from vacant to vibrant, from quiet to lively, to a variety of events, to being arts-infused, to being a welcoming place, not an exclusive place only for one group or one type of person, and moving from disconnected to connected. So over and over again, in all the content that the CRA creates, you will see those themes resonating. And the main story arcs for 2019 are business and merchant success stories. There are so many things that are just unknown and hidden about downtown Clearwater, right? So many people just aren't aware of the wonderful things that are there, so we want to make sure we really highlight those. Inclusive and vibrant public spaces, which includes not only the water... Inclusive and vibrant public spaces, which includes not only the waterfront redevelopment of Imagine Clearwater, but the Market Festival, Mercato, and Downtown Gateway that will be happening this year, and then also ongoing programming in Station Square. And the role of arts and culture in downtown revitalization, its ability to attract different audiences and to create a really welcoming environment. And now I'd like Rosemary to come back up, and she's going to give you an example of how the mural program was implemented under this editorial strategy, so what it looks like, because it's one thing to say like, oh, we're going to tell stories and that's great, what does that mean, right? So Rosemary's going to walk you through what that looks like.
Hi, y'all. So yes, as Amanda walked you all through, Rosemary DeMore, again, so as Amanda walked you all through, we have a new editorial strategy for 2019, and we wanted to share an example of the strategy in action for you. So we recently completed four murals throughout downtown, and this ties with the CRA's larger strategic focus goals and stories for 2019. The first is how the CRA is infusing downtown with art, and the second is starting a conversation around the role that art plays in increasing attachment to and pride in place. And so one of the big strategies that we're doing to kind of tell this story throughout the next year is creating lasting and engaging content that meets people where they are. And so the first step in this and first tactic that we had, our CRA team, led by Anne Lopez and Jose Patino, commissioned a series of videos on each mural, which will be rolling out over the course of the next four months. And so I wanted to show you the first video. If you can bear with me for a moment, please. Get this set up. Community Dodd located at the Garden Street Garage, and this is the first video that we've done. We're finally shot of downtown. So we released this two weeks ago, the first of the four videos that we'll be producing. And so how are you going to see this? How are you going to encounter this content? First and foremost, it's on our website, but we're also reaching people through our email newsletter, the CRA's newsletter that goes out once a month, and also on social media, so Instagram and Facebook for us. And some initial results were extremely positive. In the first week alone, this is the most engaged and highest-viewed video and post, actually, in the last two years for the CRA's Facebook page. In the first week alone, we had nearly 1,500 views and more than 600 engagements, meaning likes, comments, and shares. This was the top-clicked link in our newsletter that went out to 2,500 folks. And on Instagram, which is a major growth platform for us, we received a lot of positive comments and messages as a result of this video. We've also had significant updates to downtownclearwater.com. We now have a dedicated page for the mural program. We're going to be rolling out new content in the next few months, blog posts that are highlighting specific aspects of the program, and hopefully an interactive walking tour through 360 video, which will take you from one site to the next site, so you can see not only the murals, but also their location generally in downtown. And I would say that one thing about this series that was a surprise for us, but was a really great opportunity, is this gave us a chance to engage with folks not just about the mural program, but about the CRA itself. We received a lot of questions and comments, just trying to understand who's producing this content and where can I find this, you know, this artwork downtown, and asking us a lot of questions that brought a lot of transparency to our work and how the CRA is working downtown. So most importantly, we wanted this to be not just a single splash, so we'll be rolling this out over the course of the next year and adapting and meeting people where they are through a variety of ways. Yeah, thank you.
So our current status with permitting, 29 active and completed permits totaling $588,000 a little over in January 2019. There's a list of projects there. Construction on Apex 1100 continues. Met with Larry Dev about three weeks ago at this point, and they believe they'll be ready for occupancy the 1st of May. They are very, very, very close to being finished. And then Madison Point, which is our age-restricted, income-restricted development on South Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, will be completed in July. I've had a lot of questions about that, obviously, because it's tall structure there. Imagine Clearwater, as you know better than I do, right, we're in the middle of our financial and market feasibility studies to determine the size and scope of the band shell, and you'll hear from Janelle and Joelle later in your meeting about the Harborview Center demolition, what's happening with that. Streetscape Phase 3, you'll recall from your last meeting that we're doing additional design around utility work, so we can move that closer towards construction. We're in the middle of negotiating with a potential brewery tenant for the warehouse and green space on 115 South MLK Jr., so we'll know probably in the next 30 days if we're going to bring forward an agreement with that proposer or if we'll be starting over again. And then, of course, you just approved four tenant food and drink grant programs. Thank you for that. Just as a reminder, we still have the property owner food and drink grant programs. Originally, they were supposed to have a full application submitted by March 1st and have a tenant identified. We have three remaining phone calls today to check in with the property owners. We will be coming back to you in March with some different options to consider, whether that be simply extending the amount of time for them to secure a tenant, or if we want to think about maybe working with them to fund the building improvements in advance and then giving them an additional amount of time to find a tenant or refund the CRA money back. So we'll be meeting about that, by we, I mean Anne France and Micah, not we, to talk about potential options for that program. But our property owners are doing their due diligence, they are making efforts to secure tenants, and as we've discussed before, as we continue to change the perception of the market here, it'll become easier to attract more food and drink tenants. Are there any questions about that part so far? And private investment, still awaiting additional information on how to really activate those opportunity zones. We have two in downtown, they're going to provide significant, significant tax benefits. So meeting with a lot of different investors, there are people who want to spend money, but of course, they also want to save money, right, and take advantage of these new tax rules, so we're still waiting for that from the Treasury Department. But we'll continue with land acquisition that we've identified, continue to meet with different cultural institutions, right, in private development throughout the year. And that was all I had for today. Did you have any questions?
Any questions, staff? Nope, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments, counsel or trustees? Well, on behalf of all of us, good luck and we'll see you in 90 days. When is the baby due?
Estimated due date is next Friday, March 1st.
Oh, my gosh.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yes. One more, PPG Paints, I don't know if you saw in the video, I wanted to give a shout out to that local paint store that's on Cleveland. They did provide discounted prices for the paint for our artist, so we are very grateful to them, and the owners of One Clearwater Tower let us use their parking lot to have the lifts too, so shout out there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will adjourn the CRA and reconvene our work session, agenda item 3.1.
Hey, everyone, council, this morning we have a work session-only presentation for you on plans for the Harborview demolition, and I would like to introduce to you Janelle Ostrowski, and she's going to be presenting for her first time, so we're going to be very kind, and Joelle is assisting, so they're ready to take the presentation for you.
Presentation? Did you... I did theirs, I clicked this. It's gone.
What was the title of it?
Harborview Demolition.
That wasn't even just something...
I clicked on it earlier.
We did have it here earlier?
Yes. Yeah.
So that's not a care, huh?
This is all Sierra.
That was not sent to me.
Okay, well, we're looking for our presentation, but as Ms. Silverboard said, my name is Janelle Ostrowski, I work in the Engineering Department at the city, and I'm the project manager for the Harborview demolition. Adam's working on getting our presentation, so I apologize.
Did he put it in here?
I don't know. Okay, sorry about that. So today, we're going to give you a brief update of what has been happening and what is going to happen out at the Harborview Center. So on this first slide, we show a brief timeline of what we've done. So what I want you to take away from this slide are the checkmarks next to the items that have been completed. So I will briefly touch on each one. I'm not going to read it all for you, because I'm sure you have other items to get to, but this is the timeline and the items with the checkmarks are completed. So what happened first? So we attended the work session and council meeting in December. That is where you approved our contract to be issued to Biltmore Construction. And in the contents of that agenda item, we stated that there was a seven-month timeframe for completion from the notice to proceed, and we'll get to the notice to proceed on the next couple of slides. So our next step was our permitting and utility coordination. We started that in October, and we started it in October because we wanted the contractor to be ready to start work when the contract was awarded and after that notice to proceed was issued. We knew that there would be some back and forth between the Planning and Building Department on revisions to plans and comment letters, so that's why we started it in October. We completed that in January, and we obtained three separate building permits, a demolition permit for the actual building, the sewer cut and cap permit, a permit for the soil tieback installation, temporary fence permit, you've probably seen the fence installed out there, a permit for the trailer, a right-of-way permit, and our MOT certification. So the next step was our utility coordination. We coordinated with several entities, one being Duke Electric. They went out, de-energized the transformer, cut the power, and removed the transformer. We wanted to have everybody out there to tour the building prior, but there's no electricity, so it's not very safe, sorry about that. We also coordinated with Clearwater Gas, make sure the lines were cut and capped, Clearwater Potable Water, those lines were cut and capped and the meters pulled. We also coordinated with several communication entities, including the Clearwater Fiber Optic, Gene Nylan came out and cut his lines, FiberNet, and Frontier came out and pulled all of their equipment as well. So in January, we had our pre-construction meeting where we issued the notice to proceed to Biltmore Construction. That basically gives the contractor permission to start their work. Immediately after that, the contractor started their asbestos abatement. So before the contract was awarded, there was a survey done stating that there was approximately 5,000 square feet of building area that required abatement. So that 5,000 square feet wasn't in just one room, it was small areas that added up to the 5,000 square feet. And actually, on the next slide, you'll see what these areas look like. They're basically small dots of adhesive that were used to put up mirrors and tiles on the floor. So as you remember, it used to be a department store, so all of the mirrors that were in the dressing rooms and on the columns were stuck up there with this mastic adhesive that contained asbestos. So I'll just jump to the next slide. So you can see in that picture on the ceiling those are where the asbestos was located. So the contractor completed their work on February 8th, and at that time, then they submit a 10-day county notification to Pinellas County so that Pinellas County can come in and inspect the work and approve the demolition work to proceed. So they have 10 working days. That brings us to February 22nd. So the contractor is actually ready to start work on February 25th, that's a Monday. So they'll begin after that 10-day notification inspection, and what happens in the geotechnical remediation? So they will, what happens is, we call it a geotechnical remediation, it's basically where they're going to install the tiebacks. So what are they? So basically, it's a drill hole through the existing basement wall, and what they do is they put in these giant corkscrews. They grout them in place, and what it's there for is to preserve the basement wall. So I'll show you on this photo here. So the photo that we're showing here is part of the plan set. Basically, over here is Cleveland Street, this is Osceola, this is where the main library is over on this side. The tiebacks will go in along these walls. They're basically used to hold the walls in place. And then this shaded area here is part of the basement floor that will remain. So it's all the wall along Osceola, part of the wall on the north side of facing the library, and the wall along Cleveland Street. And this should take us about a month and a half to complete. There are 55 tiebacks that will be installed and 33 drain holes as well, and that just relieves the pressure behind the wall and allows water to escape, any groundwater to escape. Thank you. So once that is complete, the actual demolition will occur. So that's why the building is still standing right now. We need to put in those tiebacks first, and then the demolition will occur, and unfortunately, we don't have any fancy implosions, there's no wrecking balls, there's some buildings nearby that we wanted to not disturb, not impact the traffic, so this is going to be our, you know, basic dismantling and deconstruction. And the nice part about that is that the contractor will be able to take components of the building, like the concrete and metal, and have it recycled. Once the demolition is complete, we'll backfill the site, compact it, and lay down sod. It will blend in with the existing bluff and then be used for the next step, which is Imagine Clearwater. Per the contract, the contractor must be complete with their work by August the 7th. So that's all I have to tell you about. I'll turn it over to Joelle, and she's going to inform you on the community celebration.
Joelle Castelli, Public Communications Director. We wanted to talk about the communication around the Harborview. We want to make sure that the public is aware of the process and that they're not going to necessarily see things for a little bit, so our first step is to tell the council... So our first step is to tell the council about the demolition and the process, and then we're going to put the information on our website and social media. We'll also distribute out through the chambers and any listservs that we have, the link to this presentation. We're going to have a community celebration on March 29th, and that will be signifying the beginning of the demolition that you're actually going to see from the outside of the building. We're gonna coincide that with a Blast Friday, since there will be a built-in audience down at the Cleveland Street for the concert. We're gonna have indoor activities related to the celebration at the Second Century Studios, which is on that corner of Osceola in Cleveland. And we're going to do some outdoor activities around the Harborview Center and some ceremonial sledgehammering for the council. We'll also do public photos for people who have maybe celebrated their prom or homecoming, or they've had a wedding at the facility. We want them to send those photos in, so we can do a public celebration around the history of it as an event facility. And people can send those to photo@myclearwater.com. And we also have representatives from Biltmore Construction and Janelle and myself, if you have any questions.
So we're better off at sledgehammer than pushing buttons, is what you're telling us?
Well, I don't want you to push a button and nothing happens.
Mr. Albrecht.
Okay, about the sledgehammering. No, I'm excited that this is gonna happen, but I guess my question would be, what exactly are we? I know we were talking about having a wall that we could have come down, because it doesn't seem to me, if I'm looking at the schedule, that really nothing's gonna happen until April the 8th. And we're doing this on the 29th. It's just gonna look like it looks today. So are you gonna take a small, I mean, how are we doing that, I guess?
That's what we talked about with the contractors, taking some of the debris that's going to be already taken down from the other side and bringing it over and doing some photo ops, doing a green screen, where people can dress up like they're in demolition gear, and then we celebrate it with a green screen photo that they get to take with them to make it look like they, you know, demolished a portion of it. But we'll have, like, sort of like they do on a groundbreaking, where they bring in the dirt, and they have the shovels, and it's a ceremonial, you're not necessarily taking a sledgehammer to the side of the wall and breaking it down.
But there is gonna be some demolition that has taken place before?
Well, and there's demolition that's gonna be taking place inside, like, for the tiebacks, correct? So we'll have access to rubble.
I see, okay.
So we're not actually gonna be hitting a hammer on the wall itself that day?
We haven't finalized the plans for what you're gonna do yet. If you're set on that, we'll work that in somehow.
It'd be like a prisoner, you know, we were on the rock pile, I guess.
Well, no, I know, yeah. I mean, I didn't wanna go to... But don't you all think that we ought to at least hit a wall, as opposed to something fake?
We also have to clear this with risk management.
Okay. We could use a rubber mallet.
We didn't clarify through risk management that Jack Russell and me, but that's a whole 'nother story.
We didn't have the same risk manager then.
I have experience in demolishing city things.
Yes, you do.
Don't you all think we ought to have something, you know?
I wanna do the maximum demolition of the building that we can do safely and at the time.
See if y'all can figure something out.
Have the maximum effect.
Because I think everybody's, you know, everybody was sort of expecting a demolition, and I think we need to at least do something visible that, along those lines. Mr. Condon?
Are people in communication thinking about selling pieces of the wall for fundraising?
Isn't that part of the contract, that know that you guys are recycling the material? Yes.
I have a piece of the Berlin Wall somewhere.
If you pick up a piece and put it in your pocket, we won't tell.
All right, any other questions? I have a question, because I'm concerned about something. You know, we've been talking about demolishing the Harborview Center for a long time. And we've been talking for a long time about this being, you know, the first phase of the Imagine Clearwater. And we have no plans for what that first phase is gonna be, except putting sod down. And it's gonna be very difficult for a council to come back later to get rid of that sod when we have no plans again. Where are we with that first phase of the plaza for Imagine Clearwater?
So, right now, we're doing our feasibility and market study, which will be, the market portion will be discussed next week at our special meeting on the 25th. And, you know, that's going to inform some of the decision-making we're going to have as it relates to the sloping of the green, which affects or can affect things up through the plaza. So our engineers are looking at what all of those options are, so that when we make our decision about what exactly this facility is gonna look like, all of those other things can fall into place, and we can have some conversations about the civic gateway area. But those are, many of those pieces are tied to the park, to the green area where the amphitheaters are being discussed. So as soon as that market and financial feasibility piece completes, we will have a conversation as part of that discussion.
Yeah, maybe I misunderstood, but I think a lot of the public also felt like the gateway was gonna be the first thing that we were gonna tackle. And we weren't gonna have sod laid on the Harborview Center. We were gonna be ready to move. And I'm, you know, this is the frustration, I think, that the community feels, that you're telling us, well, we're still not sure what we're gonna do with the gateway area, when that was supposed to be the easiest thing to get done?
I think if the original plan was exactly like what the Imagine Clearwater master plan showed, then we, you know, that may be possible. But it's shifted a little bit, so, you know, we need to make sure that those other elements are done correctly.
So I guess we'll get more information next week when we have our meeting?
Yes, there'll be some more discussion by then.
Any other questions on 3.1?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht.
Yeah, I think we need to have a conversation, too. Like, I don't wanna get any, I want Harborview to be the main attraction right now, and we need to get going on it. But I do wanna have a conversation soon about City Hall and what we're doing there. So I'd like to see that on an agenda coming up, where we can discuss that at a work session or whatever.
3.2.
Authorized staff to solicit and select a consultant who will work in conjunction with internal and external stakeholders to enhance and update the City of Clearwater cultural plan. And Amanda Thompson will be presenting.
I'm gonna make this full screen. Maybe I don't. It's in a PDF. So I'll, Amanda Thompson, Director of the Community Reinvestment Agency, and I'm working with, is the Assistant to the City Manager this morning. Want to give you a little bit of context about what we call the arts ecosystem in Clearwater, and then talk about how staff would like to move forward in looking at some new structure for how we handle arts and cultural programming in Clearwater. So you may or may not recall, in my previous work with the Knight Foundation headquartered in Miami, was an arts program officer. So it was my job to travel to different cities across the United States and assess the strength or lack thereof of their arts community, and then determine where the foundation should invest its dollars in order to make a stronger arts ecosystem. And this language was adopted because, much like the environment, right, you need different bodies of waters, you have different species and sizes of animals, or when you think about sports, right, you have everything from your little leagues, to your after-school programs, to your high school, to your college, to your professional, right? Then in each area, there's different sizes of organizations, or different training levels. As an individual, you could be a hobbyist, right, or you might make your living at a particular activity. So one thing that we know overall, current trends in arts and culture, is that the community, the public, really has, is drawn to a broader definition of art. They don't think of art with a capital A, as a museum or a painting from the 1700s, right? It's everything from food, from culinary experiences, to the maker spaces, like we have here at the library, to a Shakespeare play, right? That there's a much broader definition of art now, and many more people are participating in what they think of as creative or cultural experiences. There's a decline in traditional sit-and-watch audiences. So in the past, and part of this is tied to, right, the internet, and there's just more access to information, right? I don't have to necessarily go to a doctor, right, to get certain information, I can look up things on WebMD, right? And it's the same thing for arts experiences. There's a decreasing level of tolerance for, I'm gonna sit in this chair, and you're gonna tell me what to think and what I'm gonna see, versus, I wanna be part of creating an arts experience. Just like in media and in government, there's distrust in formal arts institutions, and there's been a decline in attendance to your opera, your museum, your symphonies. And part of that is driven from the lack of participation. There's a focus on earned income revenue streams, right? So now you're seeing arts organizations who are not just relying on traditional donors, but they have to figure out a way to sell services, whether that's through after-school education or through consulting on innovation, right? It seems everyone has an innovative program, where they teach you how to be a creative thinker. So they're looking at that. Increase in storytelling as a means to become more inclusive, right? So when you think about traditional media or traditional arts, right, one person was allowed to tell one story, and that was the official story, right? Well, now storytelling is resurging, because there's a lot of people who wanna share their perspective, their opinion, their unique voice in the world. So you're seeing a lot more storytelling groups. I don't know if you're familiar with The Moth? But that's an organization that works nationally, that has storytelling, spoken word. There's a focus on niche experiences and not broad appeal. I was surprised to learn during my time in arts funding, the number of curators that were proposing one-on-one experiences, right? That you go and it's a play just for you, right? Or you experience theater through your phone via text message and video, right? Or you go into an installation in a park, and it's meant to be viewed one person or a few people at a time, right? So very niche, personal experiences. And then, of course, more city involvement in non-traditional performance spaces, right? So one thing I wished we'd thought of before the Harborview, before it was too late, is turning it into some kind of haunted house around Halloween. But we weren't organized enough. But those are exactly the type of venues now that cities are using to engage their community. So these are current trends in cities in the arts, where before, maybe the city made one grant to a Ruth Eckert Hall, and that was all they did. Now, cities are very, very involved in arts and culture programming. So what makes up an arts ecosystem? And at Knight Foundation, we used the term of institutions and grassroots, right? So you have your large, established institutions that provide a multitude of services, much like a library, you have training, you know, record storage, they bring in professional artists, they help hobbyists. And then you have grassroots, which are more your individual artists, your smaller organizations, say like a Clearwater Arts Alliance. But all the categories that you see here are components of an arts ecosystem. You have your advocates, right, your educators, audiences, funders, presenters, and of course, the artists themselves. So one thing, when we're looking at a community, we're looking at each of these areas to see how many do we have in this category, what is the quality of their work, and what is the diversity of offerings, right? So when we look at, how do we determine the health of an ecosystem? You know, weak systems have less examples in each block, right? They have less amount of artistic programming. Strong systems, you're providing a diversity of artistic experiences, diversity of funders, programs, et cetera. The strongest systems support an artist, or those who wish to engage in artistic experiences throughout their lifecycle, right? So no matter what age I am, or no matter what skill level or income level, I have access to artistic experiences. And then also, just variety of offerings at price points, everything from free to very high-end exclusive experiences. So in Clearwater today, we have a pretty, a pretty full arts ecosystem, I would say. I wouldn't necessarily say it's super strong, but it's not weak. And if you're looking on the public side of things, you have a public art and design board. The library has a lot of arts programming and maker spaces. You have parks and recreation programming with the sister cities, different art classes. You have creative placemaking projects between planning and the CRA. And then, right now, we have, it should be .5, not 05. We have half a staff person dedicated to the arts in Parks and Recreation. And then on the private side, you have Ruth Eckert Hall, CMA, Jazz Festival, Creative Pinellas in the County, Historic Society, Clearwater Arts Alliance. You've got a community foundation, various festivals, events, churches that have programming. This is not an exhaustive list, but yes.
Let me interrupt you. There's a typo on Ruth Eckert Hall?
Oh, yes.
Okay, make sure that we get that corrected before you circulate this any further.
Thank you. So in thinking about all of those existing assets that we have today in our community, the question that's coming up for the city, a public policy question, is what role should the city play, right, in coordinating, strengthening, growing, whatever it may be, with all of these assets? So when we look at our strengths, right, tons of community interest, a lot of dedicated facilities, right, where the arts are being presented, lots of artistic talent here. I've really been just surprised at how many great artists live in Clearwater and in this county, and really diverse mixture of different kinds of art. Some of our weaknesses are there's little to no coordination of this arts programming, right? Groups are very separate and dispersed. There's very limited private funding, right? It's atypical that the city is one of the largest funders of the arts for a city our size. Not a lot of private foundation money, not necessarily a lot of corporate funding or those individual donors, right? Limited contact with the larger arts world, pretty isolated here. There's not a ton of national and regional partnerships. And then, limited design or programming experience, right? So you might have one great concert, you might have one great exhibit, but there's not a lot of programming for audience engagement built around that. Some threats, well, up to opportunities. We do have an opportunity to leverage these strengths to generate economic development and community goodwill through cultural planning. We have a lot of platforms for experimentation, which is interesting to all ages and audiences, not just young ones. It's really our best opportunity for engaging diverse audiences, right? As you're saying, we can't have quotas, we can't force everyone to live here, right? But we can attract a wide variety of audiences to come and enjoy arts experiences in Clearwater. And we have an opportunity to define a unique artistic identity, right? It's one thing to say, oh, St. Pete has a lot of museums, and maybe they've, you know, captured kind of the arts thing, or, but no one has exclusive ownership of being an arts or culture city. And there is still an opportunity here for us to make a unique mark, whatever we decide that is, whether that's live music, right, whether it's arts tech experiences, or something we haven't even thought of yet. We still have an opportunity to establish a very strong brand and presence and focus. The threats, so what if we do nothing? We don't update a plan, we don't fund the arts, we don't coordinate, which we don't have to do, right? What we're really missing out on is what we know as successful practices for community engagement, and a major economic development trend that's not going away anytime soon, right? That when businesses are deciding to locate, when people are deciding where they wanna live, they crave and want to participate in and create cultural experiences. It is very important to them. And that is something that is a huge definial quality of life. You know, we waste time and money when we're not as coordinated as we could be, and we fail to build a sustainable cultural program, right? When we talk about the city being the largest funder, it's very hard to shift away from that, right? So if you decided, well, we need to spend a little less public dollars on art this year to do something else, in order for us to do that, we've got to build a stronger capacity within our arts organizations, right, for those earned revenue streams, creating a giving community that they know where to give, and just integrating those values, you know, more deeply into our organizations. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jim, if you guys don't have any questions for me, and he's gonna talk about next steps that city staff would like to pursue. city staff would like to pursue.
Morning, Mayor Council. Jim Halios, Assistant to the City Manager. I'd like to thank Ms. Thompson for laying out this arts ecosystem for us here in the city of Clearwater. We kind of view the ecosystem as a pathway to move forward with how we wanna address arts and cultural affairs within the city. So, how are we gonna incorporate what we've learned in this brief analysis into action to what we're gonna do moving forward? So, we've outlined a basically six-month timeframe and a plan of action. We're gonna initially work with our internal stakeholders to initiate the opportunities that were identified in the SWOT analysis. And then, after we identify those components of the arts ecosystem, we're gonna look to either through general fund dollars or hopefully secure some grant funding so we can go forward and engage with a consultant. And then, bring in our external stakeholders to work with our internal staff to develop a plan going forward. And so, what that, that plan will be, will, it'll all depend on what the internal and external stakeholders provide as feedback for us. And then, moving forward from that, we will adjust, you know, we see, as Ms. Thompson duly noted, there's a .5 FTE that handles arts and culture in the city. Now, we, that's due to a variety of factors, the downturn in the economy and then strategic decisions that were made moving forward in order to adapt to different areas that were brought back in. So, part of meeting with those internal and external stakeholders will be to, you know, we know that, we see this as a, an FTE that needs to be repurposed and incorporated in this position. And so, what we'll do is we will work with the internal and external stakeholders and kind of identify where we view this housed in the city and where it's used best at. Does it, is it in the city manager's office? Is it in Parks and Recreation? Is it in CRA? That's how we're gonna determine, you know, the pathway going forward with this position. So, we identify that hopefully in six months to have that person come on board. And we view the, the master plan as kind of a framework for this person to work off of. Because as we've seen from the SWOT analysis, a lot of this is coordination. It's getting people to talk to each other, getting certain entities to directly communicate with other entities. You know, we need to be the facilitator, we don't need to be the ones that organize everything. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions as far as this framework.
Mr. Albrecht.
So, you said a half FTE. Is that what we have now?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And is this person gonna become a full-time or is this a part-time position or?
No, it, we anticipate repurposing a position within the existing budget to address these concerns. Now, that .5 FT that we have now is basically, it's a shared position, so it's half-funded between the CRA and between the Parks and Recreation Department.
It's actually a full-time employee, though?
Yeah.
Right now.
I see.
But, but we're looking at an alternative to that and how to either add to that capacity or, you know, share that capacity further, we're not sure yet. We are looking at some potential of adding a full, a full person, you know, a whole FTE.
But just to transfer, not adding an FTE, another FTE?
Yeah, be, be within the existing budget.
Yeah, we, yeah, we're not asking you to add an FTE. We're looking to repurpose something from.
But this position will be a full-time position.
That's, that's what we're aiming for unless something about the update of the plan and these conversations that Jim is referring to take us to a different place, that's what we're thinking, that's what we think, though, right now.
Yeah, and going back to what the Deputy City Manager had to say, the last time we actually updated our cultural arts plan was back in 2009, 2010. It was actually done by Margot Walbot, who was our previous Cultural Affairs Coordinator. So, we view it's time, you know, it's, it's been 10 years and a lot of different things have happened, a lot of pieces have moved around. So, back to what Ms. Silverboard said, we aim for that to be, you know, a full-time position, but as we go through the process, who knows what we'll uncover? No more, I should say, than a full-time position.
So, we need to have this on the budget, on the agenda for Thursday evening, then?
Mayor, no. This was intended to just be a work session-only briefing for you. I don't think we need any council approval today, is that, Thursday?
Oh, okay, because it says here, "Authorized staff to solicit and select a consultant." So, I didn't know that.
I think by direction, we can do that if we all agree to it, so. And I have no problem moving forward to the next step of this.
Either way, Mayor.
No, what?
If there's consensus for staff to move forward, then it'll be fine for today. Otherwise, they will come back for council action.
Okay. But, but I think our understanding is that it's not going to take funds from somebody, it's gonna be not a new person.
Not a new FTE.
New FTE, right.
A position somewhere else in the general fund.
Right.
What we've got our sights on.
Yeah.
And I think, I think we prepared the item the way we did just to make sure we had, you know, if there were any concerns that council had about updating the plan, we wanted to get your authorization to do it. But either way, we can.
No, no, I, I think, I think we're all okay.
As long as you feel.
As long as we have the understanding that it's not adding.
And we just wanna make certain you're comfortable with us moving out on updating the cultural plan and sort of what that entails. We don't think an FTE is gonna present itself for several months, but we don't wanna wait to have the person to start updating the plan since we're gonna use an outside consultant anyway.
Okay. Okay, thanks. 4.1.
Sorry, forgot that it was.
Ms. Silverboard.
Award a contract to SunTrust Equipment Finance and Leasing Corp. to provide a $36,650,000 line of credit to finance planned lease purchases of equipment acquired in the five fiscal years starting October 1, 2018, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute the same and adopt Resolution 19-04. Mr. Veriker.
I'm Veriker, Finance Department. This agenda item is to award the contract to SunTrust Equipment for the $36.65 million line of credit to finance equipment purchases for the five-year, five fiscal years starting October 1, 2018 and adopt the reimbursement resolution 19-04. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff on 4.1? Mr. Kunda.
I'm assuming the $36 million is budgeted.
Yes, that's in the current capital improvement budget.
It's a line of credit.
Right.
It's not money that we're automatically spending.
We draw on as.
That we draw on, yes.
And what kind of equipment are we talking about? Just everything?
Big fire trucks, automobiles, primarily, probably the biggest item is automobiles, replacing patrol cars and trucks that are used by the different, you know, public utilities and whatever.
Heavy equipment.
Major equipment.
It's not. Okay, well, I'm sorry, Mr. Albrecht.
So, if you have to replace, let's say, fleet of gas vehicles or something, or individually, those vehicles are, what are they, claim surplus and then they go for sale? Is that how they do it?
I believe they would be declared surplus or obsolete and you would approve the getting rid of those and replace it. It's in the capital improvement budget, all of this equipment.
Mayor, your purchasing manager, Alice Benj, is here if you want her to answer the question.
Do you want to pursue it further?
The short answer is yes. The short answer to your question is yes. That's exactly how it works.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that's, that we were, instead of replacing fleets that, whatever vehicles that we have, we're getting some return on that as well in a market? Okay.
Okay. So, we'll have this on our agenda Thursday night. 5.1.
Approve a facility encroachment agreement with CSX Transportation, Inc. for the installation of an underground natural gas main in the CSX right-of-way and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Warrington.
Chuck Warrington, Managing Director of Clearwater Gas System. This item is a, is an agreement with the CSX Railroad to do repair work. We're replacing a line that crosses the track on Northeast Coachman.
Any questions on 5.1? Consent? 5.2.
Approve a services agreement and purchase order in the amount of $200,000 with Heath Consultants, Inc. to provide leak corrosion surveys and meter maintenance and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Warrington again.
This is our annual contract, which was bid out and won by Heath and Associates, which, who has also done it for the last couple of years, to, to do our survey of our facilities, leak survey of our facilities and repair of any meters that we find that are needing painting and repair.
Any questions on 5.2?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht.
And how often do you do this? Every year or is it every five years?
We have a, we have a schedule. We were required by federal law to survey all of our commercial system every year and, and the residential system every three years. So, we, we, we do a third a year for, for a three-year period for the residential.
Thank you, Ms. Albrecht, for asking that question. Any other questions?
Consent?
Consent? 5.3.
Approve an increase to purchase order number 18001102 with Ultimate CNG LLC in the amount of $84,800 for the period March, March 2, 2019 through March 29, 2019 to provide mobile compressed natural gas services at the Clearwater Natural Gas Filling Station and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Warrington, do we have a typo on that date or is that correct? It's a one month?
It's a one month, right. This will hopefully be the last time that we're back. This, this has been a saga of repairing the, the current compressor and we've had to use this compressor in the interim to keep our garbage trucks filled and all the other trucks that go through the station. The, the promise is that we'll have the, the repair parts within the next week or so and that we'll be able to finish that during the month of March. And hopefully, we will not use the entire month of March, but this, this provides for it should we, should we have to.
Questions for staff on 5.3? Are we recuperating any of this money?
No, well, through the sale of gas. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a required facility in order to be able to pump gas out there and we're saving a lot of money on the natural gas versus, versus gas and diesel fuel.
And to be repetitive, we are at some point replacing this thing.
Yeah. This, we, last meeting, you know, we, we approved the, another compressor that will, will go in the station. We also have a, a study that we're gonna bring forward to you probably next meeting to, to make sure exactly what we need to do on the platform. And we will eventually replace this, this particular unit that we've had such troubles with over the last few years. And every time it breaks down, we have to order parts from, from Europe to repair it. We will, I, we will likely, as a result of that study, replace that compressor with a, with an American compressor that we, that will then give us two operating compressors fixed at the station and will, and a mobile compressor as a backup.
Any other questions? Consent?
Yep.
6.1.
Approve a non-exclusive license agreement between the City of Clearwater and Sand Runners, LLC on a trial basis from March 2, 2019 through September 2, 2019 to provide beach gear valet service for beach visitors and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Lavery.
Good morning, Michael Lavery, Parks and Recreation. This is a six-month pilot program to offer beach valet services for guests to the beach at one location that is on Rockaway by the, behind Mandalay Park. This company wants to, they will have two employees set up on the beach, which have electric, battery-driven, motorized carts. They're very slow, they walk behind you at sort of a, at a walking pace. And their intention is for $10 one-way or for $15 round trip, they will put all of your gear, when if you show up with your family and the kids and everything, you put all your gear into their wagon. They'll bring it out to the beach for you and then bring it back at the end of their As I mentioned, this is a six-month pilot program at one location. It's non-exclusive and.
Questions for staff on 6.1? Mr. Albrecht.
Okay, so, this is called a valet service, but it's actually just moving after they park the stuff out of their car to and from if needed. So, first of all, how much are they, how much is the city getting out of this?
The city is, is getting $5,687.50, which is payable. Basically, just under $1,000 a month, it's $947 a month. And that's also, as I mentioned, this is a six-month pilot program to see how it goes.
All right, and this beach that these two people are gonna be working at, I guess, between the Palm and the Frenchies in that area? Will they, how will they recruit people? Will they be hawking their services through the parking lot or?
No, they have specified in the agreement, they are allowed, I believe it is two signs within that parking lot and that, that that will advertise their services. They're also, they will also have a small podium and a, and an umbrella at the location where they will be set.
So, they're not gonna be actively recruiting, running around the parking lot, asking people to?
That's a good question. Our intention is no, that they will not be, you know, hawking or.
Okay.
If they do, we'll have a conversation with them.
Yeah, I mean, the, the agreement has some very specific language in it about behavior of staff and appearance of staff and what they're wearing and behaving. They're not allowed to have any amplified sound. There are a number of caveats in the agreement that are to maintain the character of the beach.
Okay.
Mr. Kunda.
Are these gonna be electric or gas vehicles?
They are battery-powered, so I believe they charge overnight. I don't have a picture of them with me today, but they, they have big, large, the wheels look almost like the beach wheelchairs so that they move smoothly on the sand.
Mr. Hamilton.
This is, this is very difficult because any question I ask sounds like I'm being territorial, but is this company in operation anywhere else or is this the first time they've done this anywhere?
They are in operation, South County, I believe, at Treasure Island.
Okay.
They've been in Treasure Island now for a couple of years.
Okay, they have?
Non-exclusive there as well, but they, they've been proposing to work throughout the beach communities in Pinellas for a while.
Okay. Yeah, my, Mr. Albrecht asked questions that were concerned to me. I mean, I, you know, I don't want, you know, somebody to pull into a parking space in, in the Rockaway lot and all of a sudden be, you know, not confronted, but, you know, approached by someone to say, "Hey, can I help you with your gear and take it down?" It's only, I, I'm not sure that's the experience we're looking to, for our people coming to the beach to have. But they are, they're not providing any physical beach amenities. They're not, they're not supplying the umbrellas or the, you know, inflatables or anything like that. They're just offering to transport your gear down to the beach to wherever you are. I don't know, how do they, how do they operate? If you do a round trip, how do you let them know, "Hey, I'm ready to leave"? Do you have to come and get them or do you have a buzzer or?
I think you would go back and tell them, "Hey, can you come and get our things? We're ready to go."
Okay.
And to, to answer your question, Councilman, other, no, no other services or rentals or sales or anything like that. This is strictly to provide a beach gear valet is how we phrase it.
Okay.
I think those are the concerns that all of us have, you know, in terms of, are they gonna be hawking on the beach, which we try to.
Mayor, just one thing to add, just to remind the council, this is a pilot program. This has come up. We, we still aren't sure whether or not it's a great idea or not. And so, we're doing a six-month pilot, receiving dollars for allowing them to do that, and we'll, we'll address it at the end of six months. I, I think the city attorney will tell you that if we decide that we're gonna move forward, that we would actually do an RFP for services. This is strictly just to do a six-month pilot.
Second.
Paragraph 16G prohibits sand runners from soliciting beachgoers or placing flyers on any vehicles in the beach parking lot. So, they are prohibited from soliciting.
Yeah, I read the, I read the contract. Mayor, I, I think I, I'd like to take this off of consent because I'd actually like to be able to talk to some people down in Treasure Island, how it operates, and have the operators themselves maybe be here Thursday night to tell us, you know, about their operation themselves.
Yeah, no, we, we can do that. Yeah, no, we, we can do that. Um, if I recall correctly, they were in front of you about a year or so ago under Citizens Not on the Agenda, um, because they've been talking to us for a while and they have consistently talked to us, but talked to us about wanting to provide this public service, I think is what they would call it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can have, we, we can have them here.
Okay.
Are they forbidden to take passengers?
Uh, yes, the, the vehicles are, it's, it's kinda like a wagon. I mean, it wouldn't, you wouldn't put, put people in it, but yes, that is, I believe it's made clear that they're, it's not for riding vehicles.
Okay, we'll, we'll see what we can find out between now and Thursday and, and just have it on the agenda as opposed to consent.
Is there, Mayor, is there anything that council wants from Treasure Island or how do you, how do you wanna receive that information?
Uh, I'm, I'm more interested in how the operation works. I mean, to make sure that, you know, like, I mean, I can tell you from, you know, our operation, you know, somebody rents one of our umbrellas, they get a receipt. They get a written receipt of the transaction. Do these people get the same type of, uh, is there, is there a recorded receipt of every transaction they do and, and, and whatnot so that, so, so that it doesn't look, you know, I don't want anybody to ever get the impression that there's just somebody trying to, you know, get money out of them that, that we're, you know, that it's all, you know, bug bored and, and, you know, whatnot.
All right. Got it. We know, we know what you need.
And let me just throw, I, I wanna make sure, maybe Ms. Aiken could help us out here, that this doesn't appear to be a city operation, that these aren't city employees and if something should happen to your gear, you know, i- is it gonna stay on internal, you know, between the vendor and, and the person or is it gonna involve the city at all?
They're not agents of the city, so it's clearly independent.
And now for a question that sounds extremely territorial. Why, why was the Rockaway lot selected rather than Beach Walk down, you know, somewhere down on Beach Walk where the public parking garage for the Hyatt is?
If, if I remember the story correctly, uh, these two individuals were, were out at Rockaway. Um, they encountered someone that needed help, asked them to help, and they were, they were, uh, good citizens and they helped them get their stuff out at the beach and the person gave them a, um, gave them a, some, some money for doing that.
Yep.
Um, so they thought that that would be a, um, a, a great service to be able to offer there and that's probably two, three years ago now and have been talking to us about it ever since. Uh, at some point went down and opened up an operation down in Treasure Island, have come back and revisited and that's why I go back to, you know, where we've said that, you know, we said, "Okay, well, we'll, we'll, we'll look at it as a trial and see whether or not it does or does not make sense for us so that we can answer the question once and for all."
So let me throw this out. Can we do a, a three-month lease as opposed to a six-month, you know, through the 4th of July?
I, I don't see why not. I don't know what we'd have to do to change the agreement though.
I mean, we could take that back to...
Just amend it.
Yeah. Yeah, we could take that back to the, to the proposed contractor. We, we just don't know what their reaction to that would be.
Yeah.
I mean, we've, we felt like the summer season makes sense and that's why we negotiated it the way we did.
No, I, I really, I figure we're going through Labor Day, but I'm, I'm just wondering whether, you know...
Well, and I believe the, um, I believe the agreement also, you know, if things get, if the pilot is not going well, um, we have the ability to, to pull the plug on the pilot.
That's right.
So, you know, if, but if it's going great, you know, then, so we, we could keep you, we can keep you posted.
So we could terminate, we could terminate in three months on our own?
Believe it anytime. At, at will by the city is the wording. It's revocable.
So, so if for any reason this doesn't go well, we don't feel that the, the program is being, um, effective or done or conducted in a constructive way, then we can, we can terminate.
Okay.
Is September 2nd, is that, is that Labor Day or does that get through the Labor Day weekend or is that?
I believe that gets through...
Terminating right before.
Now you're gonna make me have to go look up my calendar.
I don't have my calendar in front of me.
It is, it is Labor Day.
September 2nd is Labor Day.
It's Labor Day, yes.
There we go. All right.
All right, let's have this on the agenda for Thursday. Okay. 6.2.
Approve a license agreement between the Rogers Blue Jays Baseball Partnership and the City of Clearwater to use Jack Russell Stadium during the Class A Dunedin Blue Jays season, April the 7th, 2019 through September the 1st, 2019 and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Dunbar.
Uh, good morning, Kevin Dunbar, Director of Parks and Recreation. Um, kinda dovetailing on something the mayor said earlier. This is again, the City of Clearwater helping out on a county-wide basis. Um, as council may recall, the, the Toronto Blue Jays are embarking on some major renovations, uh, at their facilities and Grant Field will need to be closed. It's gonna close right after spring training this year and so the, the Florida State League entry that the Blue Jays have, the Dunedin Blue Jays, uh, need to, uh, need to find a place to play games during 2019. Um, we have, uh, we've kinda come to an understanding with them and that's what you have in front of you. They'll pay our standard rental fees for the facility. By the way, they will not be impacting the St. Pete College or Clearwater High School. Um, we have worked that out with the Florida State League in terms of games to, uh, to really minimize the amount of impact and how that is, is they're not playing a lot of home games early in the season while those activities are going on, but they'll be playing later. Um, they will also be doing a series of upgrades to the facility that they will be leaving. Um, so there's these enhancements or enhancements to allow for, for minor league baseball to sign off on this. Um, and they will be handling all the day of operations of their games and activities. Um, and so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions on 6.2? Mr. Kandah.
So it looks like there's about a, pardon me for starting with so. I'm trying to break myself and others about doing that. Uh, $65 an hour, uh, license fee and lighting fee for when they, for, for when they, are there any other fees that I don't see?
Yeah, those are, those are our standard fees, what we would charge somebody to be, to be out using, utilizing the facility. Um, if there was another fee, I would tell you that's the capital improvements that they'll be making and leaving. That'll be a legacy piece that will stay on at the facility.
Oh, at Jack Russell.
Yeah.
Do we anticipate, just because of the, um, number of games in the, that'll be taking place, do we anticipate having to do any, um, renovation or re-sodding of the field itself at the end of the season or do we think that, you know, through, is it, the Blue Jays groundkeeper's gonna be on-site taking care of it and everything the whole time?
Right.
Good enough.
So I, I think...
They're used to, they're used to doing this.
And I, and I think almost the opposite thing and that is that maybe doing a field for, for, for a minor league baseball team. Uh, so, so actually, um, our youth will have the opportunity to have an upgraded facility.
Even better. Okay.
Help us out in scheduling the Blue Jays and the Thrashers. Uh, there's real, I mean, since they're both being the same city now, does that cause any problems for the Thrashers?
One of the things that they've, they've attempted was to, um, play some of those games actually at Spectrum Field. So where the Blue Jays would be the home team, uh, but they would actually be playing at Spectrum Field. Um, but there'll be a few times where the Thrashers will be coming to, to, to Jack Russell in terms of that immediate impact. Uh, Blue Jays are not looking to really advertise or attract a lot of fans this year. Um, this is really about getting their games in and getting their work in. Um, I mean, this happened a couple of years back with Lakeland and I think they use Florida Southern University and this is just about, you know, kinda playing this season and then moving, moving forward.
And then parking, will there be sufficient parking with what, the library and the Ross North, I mean, the North Greenwood facility?
Yeah, we, we've got, um, a couple hundred parking spaces there in three different pockets of locations, um, around the field. Um, again, they're 150, 200 people is what they're expecting. So, um, you know, there won't be a fireworks night, you know, or anything like that. You know, again, looking to get the games in, uh, but not, not necessarily looking at, at a, at a bigger experience.
But, but they're gonna be charging for parking, right? Or is the parking gonna be?
Parking's gonna be free.
Okay, so it won't, it won't impact?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, right. It won't impact the other things going on.
Like the library or?
Yeah, like, like almost like four, people going there because it's free versus, yeah. No, there, there is no charge for parking.
Okay.
One more question. Thank, thank you. Uh, what do you anticipate under seven, the city improvements, uh, the cost of those improvements?
Uh, we're, we're probably pushing around $50,000.
Consent?
Yes.
6.3.
Approve two alternative sculptures for Sculpture 360, Season Nine Art in the Cleveland Street District and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Ms. Favaro. Favaro?
Favaro.
Favaro. Yeah.
Madi Favaro, Parks and Rec. Uh, I'm bringing forward two alternatives for the Sculpture 360 program of Season Nine. Um, the previous sculptures that were approved, um, I think it was like about two meetings ago, um, both of the artists and the alternate sold their pieces before I was able to get a contract in place. So, um, the, I went back to the selection panel and we brought forward, um, two new, um, artists. Dominic Martinez would be the, um, the choice and then Jen Gere, the alternate.
Questions?
This is just for one piece then?
Yeah, correct. This is just one piece on the 600 block.
Yeah. I liked them both, so, yeah, that's...
Can't go wrong with hearts and flowers.
Consent?
Yes.
7.1.
Approve the contract for sale of real property between the City of Clearwater and Genie M. Zimmerman and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same, together with all other instruments required to effect closing. Mr. Burzak.
Good morning, Robert Burzak, Real Estate Service Coordinator. Uh, the city acquired this small remnant parcel via tax deed back in 1967, but so size imposes limitations on potential land uses. The adjacent property owner expressed interest in acquiring this land to increase the size of their property. An independent appraisal has determined the fair market value is $2,275. City council declared the property surplus for sale through invitation to bid on November 1st, 2018 with, with bids exceeding $2,275. The city required one qualifying bid, uh, from the bidding property owner with a pros purchase price of $2,300. City staff recommends approval of the contract. City closing costs will be deducted from the sale.
Any questions on 7.1? Consent?
Yep.
7.2.
Approve an easement termination and release of a City of Clearwater gas line easement located in the City of Largo as recorded in Official Records Book 3432, page 446 of the Public Records of Pinellas County, Florida. Authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Burzak again.
Uh, the easement was granted to the City of Clearwater in 1970 for the installation and maintenance of a natural gas line on the subject property located in the City of Largo. The new property owner has requested that the gas line easement be terminated and released so they can develop the site. Clearwater Gas does not maintain any facilities within the easement and has no objection to the termination of the easement.
Questions on 7.2? Consent?
Yep.
7.3.
Approve the conveyance of a distribution easement to Duke Energy for the installation and maintenance of a new power line and electric facilities for City of Clearwater property at 1700 North Belcher Avenue and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Burzak.
The proposed easement will provide Duke Energy property rights necessary to service and maintain its electrical equipment that will support the new data center additions to Fire Station 48.
Any questions on 7.3? Consent?
Yes.
7.4.
Approve the conveyance of a distribution easement to Duke Energy for the installation and maintenance of a new power line and electrical facilities for City of Clearwater property at 1550 North Arc Taurus Avenue and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same.
The proposed easement will provide Duke Energy property rights necessary to service and maintain its equipment that will provide electric service to the city's street sweeping facility.
Any questions on 7.4? Consent? 7.5.
Approve the conveyance of a distribution easement to Duke Energy for the installation and maintenance of a new transformer, power line and electric facilities for City of Clearwater property at Ruth Eckert Hall and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Burzak.
The proposed easement will provide Duke Energy property rights necessary to service and maintain its electrical equipment that will support the Ruth Eckert Hall Experience Project.
Any questions on 7.5? If, if we take this off consent, does this mean that, uh, Ms. Aiken or Ms. Call has to read all this?
Yes, sir.
Wow. Consent?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
8.1.
Approve a license agreement between PSTA and the City of Clearwater for a beach transit stop located within the Beach Marina parking lot and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Chesney.
Ed Chesney, Marina and Aviation. PSTA has used the beach parking lot over the years without an actual agreement and, and doing that, um, they've had several different locations there where they just exit into the parking lot and with the marina being as busy as it is these days, we decided to move them to a location that was more beneficial to the traffic in the marina. And as a result, we're gonna go, uh, have an agreement with them, a license agreement like we would on any private property. Typically PSTA would operate in the right of way, but this is on the actual marina property. This, um, agreement in, in your packet here is a 30-day notice for them to vacate if we're not happy with them. They are gonna invest in the, in their stop, about $23,000. So when, when this comes back for you to sign, we're gonna substitute this agreement we got over the weekend, an agreement change which will allow them to reimburse some of their investment over five years. Um, a mutually exclusive agreement at, at this site would not benefit the city and an example of when we might ask them to leave would be if we were gonna redevelop the marina site, we wouldn't wanna have that bus stop impede us in any way. So for five years, we would say, if we, say we wanted to build a parking garage and it was right where this bus stop was, we would, there would be a prorated reimbursement on their $23,000 investment.
Questions on 8.1? Mr. Albritton.
This is a lot better location than, especially with spring break coming up. So I just wanted to say that I was, was interested in this before and I'm glad they're doing it.
I, I think I heard him say, "Is this a much better location?"
It is, it is a much better location because it stopped too close to the roundabout with multiple buses. It actually, um, stopped traffic in the roundabout previously.
Yeah.
Consent on, Mr. Hamilton?
This, this is at the easternmost technically exit from the marina parking lot, correct?
Yes.
On, so the, you know, really you can only go right and get onto the small bridge and head over to Causeway.
Correct.
And the $23,000 in improvement, is that gonna be like canopy or something for people who are waiting for the bus?
There will be, there will be two shelters, similar, the exact same style shelters that, that's on the north side and a pad where you can offload and not be in the street. So passengers, the buses will pull up and you'll step onto a pad which then will connect to sidewalks in the trail.
Consent on 8.1?
Yeah.
Okay. Counsel, let's just take a, a recess until 10:55.
Thank you.
Okay? Okay?
Okay.
I'd like to reconvene the work session of February the 19th. Our meeting will be Thursday, February the 21st at 6 o'clock. We are now at Agenda Item 8.2. Mr. Chesney.
Approve the Clearwater Ferry Services, Inc., 2019 Spring Break Water Taxi Agreement, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same.
Yeah, Ed Chesney, Marina and Aviation. As a result of the discussion at your last meeting, I started conversations with the Clearwater Ferry, who operate out of the marine, both of the marinas, and do their loop around island estates, on how we could bring them into the spring break Sugar Sand, increase in capacity. That's what we were looking for, an increase in capacity. They operate now with three vessels and have about 126 seats over those three vessels. So this agreement is going to not reduce ticket prices for them, it's going to increase capacity of their fleet through rented vessels. So for spring break at peak periods, which we've identified through them, and during Sugar Sand, they'll add one boat with a 49-passenger capacity during those peak spring break periods, and two vessels during Sugar Sand. What that'll do, it'll keep the lines at a minimum, and it'll increase the shuttle service back and forth tremendously by adding almost 50 seats during spring break and almost 100 seats during Sugar Sand. So if you have any questions?
Questions for staff on Agenda Item 8.2? Nope. Mr. Albert, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the city, the ferry will put on two more boats. Are they leasing those boats?
They're renting them, yes.
They're renting them for that period?
We'll reimburse them after they've paid the cost. We're not giving them the money upfront.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Hamilton.
The funding is available in special program, long number. Is that part of the parking revenues? Or is that somewhere else? Did we go somewhere else with it?
It was an account that was set up in the very original ferry contract, and it was, there were some monies left over in that, so this will pretty much exhaust that money that was left in that special fund.
But it is, the source is general fund.
Okay.
We are staying consistent with previous decision to fund the ferry services out of the general fund rather than the parking fund.
Okay.
Consent?
Yes.
Agenda Item 8.9.1.
Approve a future land use map amendment from the institutional I category to the residential urban RU category for 4.88 acres of property located at 1625 Union Street and pass ordinance 9224-19 on first reading. Mr. Brotherton.
Thank you. Collier Brotherton, Planning and Development. So this future land use map amendment involves a 4.8 acre property, which is on the south side of Union Street, approximately a half mile east of North Highland Avenue. Parcel is currently owned by Union Place LLC, which purchased this property in 2018. However, the property is still being used as a place of worship by Mount Zion United Methodist Church. The applicant's requesting to amend the future land use designation from institutional to residential urban, and the applicant has also submitted a zoning atlas amendment, Case REZ 2018-11004, which is being processed concurrently with this case. The proposed residential urban category allows for primarily urban-low-density residential and residential equivalent uses, and permits a density at 7.5 units per acre. The requested amendment would allow the property to be redeveloped as a single-family subdivision, and the applicant has submitted a preliminary plat for 27 lots, which is currently being reviewed by the Development Review Committee. And this proposed number of lots would be less than the maximum allowed under the proposed land use category. And the proposed amendment is consistent with the Community Development Code, as detailed in the staff report, and the Community Development Board made unanimous recommendation of approval at its January 15, 2019, meeting.
Questions for staff on 9.1? Okay, it'll be on our...
I raised a different hand this time, so you didn't see it. This has been a church for a long time, Mount Zion.
I believe so, yes, correct.
And so this owner is basically forcing them to relocate somewhere else?
Don't know if they're necessarily forcing them to, but as the owner of the property, they can do, you know, as they please.
You know, let's clarify that. The church is selling the property, right?
It's been sold, correct, yeah.
Yeah. This church sold the property.
What leads you to believe that they were, that the developer forced them to?
Well, I didn't know that the developer and the, you know, I don't know if the current church that is there now is renting that space, or if they owned it, and I didn't know.
So the Union Place LLC, they purchased this property in 2018, but Mount Zion is still using that property as a church currently. So I imagine that the owners are allowing them to either go out through a lease that they already have, or to use this property as such until they're ready to redevelop the site.
All right. Okay, thanks.
All right.
9.2.
Approve a zoning atlas amendment for the institutional I district to the low-density, low-medium-density residential LMDR district for 4.88 acres of property located at 1625 Union Street, pass ordinance 9225-19 on first reading. Mr. Brotherton.
Thank you. So this is the companion zoning atlas amendment being processed concurrently with the aforementioned case. And this proposed zoning atlas amendment would amend the zoning district from institutional to the low-medium-density LMDR district. The low-medium-density residential district is compatible with the surrounding zoning districts and single-family uses that exist in the vicinity of the subject property, and again, it would allow the property to redevelop as a single-family subdivision. The proposed zoning atlas amendment is consistent with the Community Development Code, as detailed in the staff report, and the Community Development Board made a unanimous recommendation of approval at its January 15, 2019, public hearing.
Any questions on 9.2? 9.3.
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of residential low RL and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium-density residential LMDR district for 3041 Grandview Avenue, 510 Moss Avenue, and 3025 Merrill Avenue, and pass ordinances 9232-19, 9233-19, and 9234-19 on first reading. Mr. Brotherton.
Thank you. So these voluntary annexations involve 1.052 acres of property consisting of the three parcels of land which are occupied by single-family homes. The applicants are requesting annexation in order to receive sanitary sewer service as part of the Capecock Terrace Sewer Expansion Project. The applicants have paid the required sewer impact fee in full and will be connected to the city sewer system once it is made available. And upon annexation, solid waste will be provided to the properties.
Any questions on Agenda Item 9.3? 9.4.
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of residential urban RU and initial zoning atlas designation of LMDR, excuse me, low-medium-density residential LMDR district for 1300 Idlewild Drive and pass ordinances 9229-19, 9230-19, and 9231-19 on first reading. Mr. Brotherton.
Thank you. So this voluntary annexation petition involves a 0.325 acre property, which is currently vacant. The applicant is requesting annexation in order to receive solid waste and sanitary sewer service from the city upon development of the property. The closest sanitary sewer lines are located in the adjacent Idlewild Drive and North Betty Lane Right of Way, and the applicant has paid the required sewer impact fee and assessment fees in full, and is aware of any additional costs to extend to the city sewer main.
Any questions on 9.4? All these will be on our agenda for further discussion Thursday night. 9.5.
Ratify and confirm an increase to contract number 900109 with Quorum Services LLC of Tampa, Florida, in the amount of $62,261 for period January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018, and authorize an increase of $125,000 for the period January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019, for inspection services and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Gariot.
Good morning. I'm Kevin Gariot with Planning and Development. Our item is asking for money for our contract inspections, for doing building inspections, also could be for plane review. In your packet, there was a table and a graph that shows some of the specifics as to why we are asking for this, the increase in numbers. I've got a few other things here I want to hand out if I can, and I will explain some of that or put it on the Elmo and go over it. So the first table, first table that you see there is the number of inspections. And I did those for five years, rarely four years, from 2014 to last year. And you see each year is quite a significant increase. From 2017 to 2018, we went from 29, almost 30,000, to 32, almost 33,000. That's number of individual inspections. So it just gives you an idea of the volume that we are, that we're seeing. The next one...
Kevin, before you leave that slide, can you just clarify, this is all inspections by us as well as external?
Yes, this is everything that was requested through our office. The next one, which you'll see, the blue bars, is the graph that shows the increase, and that is a number of permits that we've issued. And I think down at the bottom, did we get that on? Yeah. You can see the total numbers, again, from 2014 to 2018. 2019 shows up because I did that through the end of January, so you see that's a small number there. But the important thing that I wanted to show was the increase from 2017, from 271 to 468. And this is millions of dollars of value in jobs as they are going up. Next one, which is a green bar chart, is the number of permits that are issued. See that all? Okay. Again, you see from 2017, 2018, sizable increase. And the numbers on that went from 96 to, 9,600 to 11,000. So you see kind of a steady increase ever since 2014. And then our revenue, the dollars that we've taken in, kind of following true with all of those other numbers that I gave you. If you see the bottom, last year we took in 3 million, two. Year before was 2 million, about seven. Again, kind of, pretty much a steady increase from 2014 to last year. So with that increase, we are asking for an increase in our contract value for this coming year. coming year.
What's the blanks on October, November, December of 2014?
Well, the way we have our report set up that runs that table is it goes by fiscal year. So, because I put in January 1 through 2014, that fiscal year would be shown...
In the one before.
Let me think now.
No, I mean, it would be...
That would have been the 2013 year on this, the way that prints out.
Fiscal year.
Oh, the fiscal year starts in October.
Right.
So, the titles on the bottom for the fiscal year or for the calendar year?
They're for the calendar year, but the report is set up to do by fiscal year. But, I mean, you can put in any month that you want to. So, that title is a little bit of a misnomer.
I mean, I don't understand why those three months would be blank because it's the start of the 2015 fiscal year.
I can't tell you right now. I'll have to find out.
We'll get back to you, Mayor. We'll clarify.
Those three months from 2014.
I think that what you did is you populated them in 15, but we'll clarify.
Okay.
I think that's October, November, December 2015. But let us clarify that, and we'll get back to y'all.
And the permits that are issued, they're not from new, it's any permit, right?
It's any permit, right. Yep, remodels, new, big, small, anything.
Yep. Okay, this will be on our calendar for Thursday night. Any other questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Albreton?
Yeah, okay. So, I see that the revenue has gone up as well because of the amount of permits. So, why are, if the revenue didn't cover the additional inspectors, is that what we're... May I? The...
Mr. Del.
Pardon?
Mr. Del.
Yeah, Michael Del, Planning and Development Director. Let me just briefly summarize. For a number of years, we've relied on outside consultants through the...
Big run-up, for example, we didn't have a lot of staff. So, when we had the Great Recession, where a lot of jurisdictions were laying people off or eliminating positions, we didn't have to do that. So, we've developed over the years a core group of individuals who know and understand our customer service commitments and obligations. So, we have the revenue stream that comes in for this. We estimate yearly in our general fund budget what our revenues will be. So, this year, we reduced our revenue estimates because we had gone through the big hotel developments and a lot of that sort of thing. We didn't anticipate that, which, and we haven't had a lot this year. I think in the coming year, we're going to anticipate at least two more hotels under construction, which is part of the reason that the second part of this request is an additional funds to be allocated for next year. But at the end of the day, these revenues or these expenditures are more than covered by the revenues that we're getting in. So, it's not a, you know, general allocation of those revenues to this service, but it's a budgeting of the service, and those are being covered by the revenues. So, if that, the expenditure on the outside consultant is more than offset by the permit revenues that we're taking in.
Mr. Albreton. So, the Quorum Services LLC of Tampa is your service?
And Joe Payne. We're hiring two. We keep two contractors on staff.
Okay, but this is from January 1, 2018, through December 31, 2018?
Right. We need $62,000 in order to close out the last calendar year. So, that's part one of the request.
Which is actually in the first quarter of the current fiscal year.
Okay, right, because it starts different than the calendar year.
Right, it's our October 1 start date.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. We'll discuss it further on Thursday. If there's any other questions. 10.1.
Authorize the purchase and/or rental of generators and transfer switches, replacement parts, and services for an annual not to exceed amount of $1 million, which is 300,000 from building and maintenance and 700,000 from public utilities through March 2021. In accordance with City Code of Ordnance, Section 2.5641D, other governmental entities abid and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Porter.
Good morning, everyone. David Porter, Public Utilities Director. Bringing this item forward, as you can see, not only for public utilities, but for the Building and Maintenance Department as well. As you well know, we have a number of large emergency generators located throughout public utilities and also various locations throughout the city that are managed by either public utilities or by the Building and Maintenance Department. All of those units need to be maintained on a consistent basis and serviced. There are only certain vendors that can provide that service, either Caterpillar for the units that have a Caterpillar engine, or Cummings for those that we have that are a Cummings engine. And so, what we're bringing forward today is essentially a renewal, although it's a new purchase because we had a one-year contract of this type last year as well. This year, we're bringing it forward for two years to fund those operations on the generators to make sure they're there when we need them. So, with that, I'll...
Any questions on 10.1? Consent?
Yes. Sorry, I just had a question.
Sure.
The PDFs that you have attached are from three different counties, well, two counties in the city.
Correct.
What are the relevance, the relevance of those contracts with what we need?
We're doing what's called a piggyback.
Oh, all right.
So, there's existing contracts out there that other governmental agencies are able to piggyback so we don't have to get our own. The first two items, the Ring Power and the Cummings, they're sole source. There's no one else that can provide their own parts and their own service. But there are rentals, and other companies can provide rentals other than the manufacturers. So, we're piggybacking on a Pasco County and a city of Peters, St. Peters, per contract for those. And then for Hernando County, that's a different contract for supply. So, those are piggybacks.
All right, thank you.
Consent? 11.2.
Thank you very much.
Clearwater Shuffleboard Club stormwater fee. Mayor and council, I believe you're familiar with this request that has been received and responded to under the mayor's signature to the president of the Clearwater Shuffleboard Club. As you have been contacted in the past by other local partners that manage and operate facilities for us, you are being asked to consider covering the stormwater utility fee for the shuffleboard lawn bowling facilities that this particular partner is responsible for pursuant to their license agreement with us for the use of those facilities. And the mayor's letter of February 8, I think, sort of summarizes for you your consideration previously and your current consideration, which the mayor said you would have on. So, Mayor, we have Elliot Schoberg, our stormwater manager, is here. I'm very familiar with some of the history on this as well, as I'm sure the city attorney. So, we're prepared to respond to whatever questions the council may have. I think my cautionary note is exactly what we put in your response, Mayor, to the club, which is that if the city should do this for one entity, then you are going to probably be pressed to do so for others. You can't waive the fee within the stormwater fund itself. So, it's not like the city can just write it off. You have to do it, and we recommended, in the verbiage of the letter, we were using the word grant because that's how you handled a previous request from the Historical Society, but the grant was not specific to the stormwater utility fee. Just by way of background quickly, too, in case this wasn't provided to you, we did have Mr. Schoberg go back and verify the current calculation. I think the city attorney had suggested we do that. We have done that for the lawn bowl and shuffleboard facilities, that property, and we can confirm that the monthly amount is correct. So, Mr. Schoberg, and we're here to answer whatever questions, but it's really an item for your deliberation on how you wish to respond, if at all.
Council, before I ask for some questions, let me just clarify something for us. In terms of facilities, what other facility would we, are under the same, you know, for example, we have the Horseshoe Club?
Yes, sir.
Would Ruth Eckert Hall or the Capitol Theater be included in that group?
I don't recall the specifics of the agreements for Ruth Eckert Hall and Capitol Theater.
Ruth Eckert Hall may, Capitol Theater would not.
How about the Stadium Spectrum Field?
Anybody with a water meter is assessed a stormwater utility fee.
So, conceivably, all these are city facilities?
If there's potable water there, that's how the bill is attached, and when they get their CO, that's when the stormwater utility fee goes into effect.
And to clarify also, so, obviously, you've got some pretty large facilities, and they have different revenue streams and capabilities. But you mentioned the Horseshoe Club. They would be a very, I think, comparable entity, the Historical Society at South Ward. But you also have other smaller partners. For example, I'll just mention the, you know, you have with the, I believe it's the Clearwater Bombers, maybe the, I believe it's the Bombers softball team at Marymont. It's a softball field, and there's a water meter there, there's restrooms there, there's, you know, a stormwater utility fee that they're covering. So, there are some of those larger facilities as well, but you can see on a property like the lawn bowl shuffleboard property, it can be, you know, it's a fairly significant calculation on their utility bill. So, it's only going to go up from there, in all likelihood, for those that you mentioned, Mayor.
And we provide, what do we provide the shuffleboard? They made reference in the original letter to us that isn't attached here about, well, other cities do such and such for them, but we provide also for them, correct?
So, I'm probably the only person left in the room that can make a stab at responding to this question, but I'll do it with the caveat that Mr. Dunbar is probably more conversant in these than Ms. Aiken and I happen to be. But we do, and we actually still are responsible for all the capital maintenance of those facilities. So, roofs and some of those other structural components in particular, and any of the parts of the facility that are beyond sort of their delineated boundary, you know, for example, the Horseshoe Club is surrounded by Ed Wright Park. We do all the maintenance in Ed Wright Park. So, each one can be a little different in that respect, but we do, in fact, not require them to have a lot of that responsibility for the things that we own as the public.
Just wanted to get...
They're more operational-driven, is what I'm trying to say.
Mr. Hamilton?
I guess my question is, I don't know the business model of the shuffleboard club. I don't know if, you know, is it membership-driven? Is there a membership fee? Do you pay for the time you're there using the court itself, the shuffleboard court, and that type of thing? And if so, you know, what is that price structure? What is the history of that price structure? How much does it cost today versus what were they charging five years ago? You know, could they, can they alleviate this charge just by charging a little bit more for the people that are using it? I don't know.
There was something in their original letter, if I remember correctly, that sort of implied that they were limited by some state organization or charters to how much they could charge for games, you know, when you go play there or tournaments. I don't remember the specifics on that.
I don't recall. I mean, they essentially pay for their operating costs, including the utility bill, and that's where the stormwater piece comes in. The others, you know, obviously are more consumptive controlled because unless there's a large activity there, then, you know, they're probably using minimum water.
It's the city.
But we've provided as much relief, you know, again, landscaping, capital.
And as you've noticed, council, this is, you know, they made this very same request in 2016, and, you know, the answer was basically, you know, the same. Because, again, if we're going to do it for one, it's going to be very hard for us not to do it for all these other groups. And does that impact our ratings or ability to bond or anything like that?
No, because we wouldn't pay it out of the stormwater utility. You'd have, this would be a general fund expense. You can't disadvantage the stormwater utility by waiving the fee or some other calculation that provides for, you know, an exemption or something. That's...
Mr. Halios was listening to this from the other building and sent a message that says they don't pay rent and we provide the landscaping.
I thought there was something there, you know, their letter to us implied that we didn't do anything for them.
Yeah, no, that's in your letter. All they have to cover are the operating costs, essentially. So, their business model is not our business.
Yeah.
The way in which they run, you know, membership or tournament or what level of activity, we do believe that a large number of the users are seasonal.
Right.
I mean, we know a little bit about that, Mayor, but not enough to really explain, you know, why they do what they do or how they do it.
Mr. Kondo?
I have a question, and then I'll figure out a way to get the second part as a question. This park that they're meeting in, is it used at all during the year for anything else?
Yeah, I'm not from parks, but I do see folks out there running their dogs and walking along that area on the western side of the facility in the morning. And, you know, but what are uses it's used for, I don't know.
There doesn't seem to be any other organized...
There is no other organized entity using the property. What use Mr. Schoberg describes is actually incidental. We've discussed over the years the idea of perhaps a trail along the Stevenson Creek side of the property, which is the western boundary that he's describing, but otherwise it's incidental and it is not specific to an agreement or an authorized entity. It's public property, so those things are happening.
And this charge of 800, is it 800?
Yes.
Dollars a month? This is for the entire park, or is there more than one meter to the park?
It's separated between the shuffleboard court and the lawn bowling court. So, they each have their own stormwater utility fee, and it's assessed per individual, the parking spots in the building and the impervious area that they have associated with it.
And they're just paying for the one?
Correct.
For the one area? That makes sense. Do you think it might profit them to contact the senior games folks who moved in last year and the other side of town?
I'm not familiar with...
To help them with this park? See, I figured out a way.
I haven't reached that point in my life yet. I'm not familiar with that group.
You want to take that one, Mayor?
What?
He hasn't reached that point in his life.
Oh, oh.
I thought he was going to go, I work in the...
I wasn't thinking that he wasn't at the senior games yet, but that they weren't, you know, had the facilities here and using some space at the lawn center. That was what you were mentioning. That was how I would interpret the question, Mr. Hamilton.
And I don't know if senior games, if shuffleboard is part of the senior games. I would think it might be.
Yeah, I'm sure it is, but it's also, you know, the club in St. Petersburg has a very different demographic, I believe. They've been able to attract younger people, and for, you know, this club, for whatever reason, doesn't seem to get that same community support. And I don't know whether it's something that they do or don't do, you know, different from, you know, what goes on in St. Petersburg or what. But, you know, there may be, you know, I'm just afraid of what this opens us up to, you know, with other organizations. And that's why, you know, several years ago, we didn't take any, you know, other than telling them no, and... them no, and, you know, I appreciate their wanting to come back, but it really hasn't changed anything. Okay? We'll move on to anything further for us, Ms. Silverboard?
No, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Aiken?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any other comments? I'm going to make one comment because I had raised this question when we first moved out of City Hall into our new facility, and I noticed on social media, there was also some concern expressed, and we've been in this new building now a month. There's still no sign on Cleveland Street identifying us as being, you know, in that, on that property, and they're still in the directory. When you entered the building, there's no sign that says that we're there. It's been a month, and I would think that, you know, hopefully it's not going to take a year like it took the ring to open up before we get signage there, and I would appreciate our looking into that because, like I say, it's on social media now, and it's embarrassing. With that, our meeting is at 6 o'clock on Thursday night here in the library.